Welcome to the District 205 Board Meeting of Tuesday, February 14, 2012. We have been in closed session since 6:00 for the purposes of collective negotiations and employment of employee. I will recall this meeting to order and note that there are seven board members present. None are absent. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on our agenda this evening is public comments, and two people have indicated an interest in addressing the board this evening. When you come to the podium, please come up here and state your name and address for the record. The first person wishing to speak is Jim Pluskoda.
Thank you. I'm Jim Pluskoda. I'm the principal of Edison School in Elmhurst, Illinois. And after five years applying for the National Geographic Giant Traveling Map of Asia, Edison School was finally able to receive that gift from National Geographic. We're very, very truly proud to have had it at our school. It's a giant map measuring 26 by 33, and it came with a full kindergarten through sixth grade curriculum. The fees were paid by the generous PTA of Edison School. We put together a planning team that included PTA members, our teachers, myself, and the District 205 Social Studies Coordinator, Karen Molitari. Our stated goals were to, one, get as much use out of the map in as many different ways as we could. We wanted to expose as many as District 205 students as possible to this amazing resources. And, three, we wanted to collaborate with as many district entities as we could to underscore our strength as a unit district and achieve our other goals. In school, we involved all of our special teachers, in addition to the classroom teachers. Jim Vervek, our PE teacher, did a fantastic job introducing the kids to the map by games like Cardinal Capture. Mr. Leverens, our art teacher, focused on Asian-themed art, including 3D Chinese lanterns and Japanese print art. Our librarian and planning team member, Mary Greska, worked on latitude and longitude activities, solving resource and population concentration questions and more. Our music teacher, Laverne Cavanda, incorporated different Asian and Middle Eastern rhymes and rhythms and instruments. But the creativity prize goes to our Spanish teacher, Senora Hilborn, who switched to teaching Chinese, both Mandarin and Cantonese, for two weeks. She gave all of the students an introduction to the languages and then taught them the words like ocean, river, mountain, in both languages, as she played games with the kids on the map. Also, each teacher signed up for at least two trips on the map and incorporated as much of their existing grade-level curriculum as they could. To meet our second goal of getting as many District 205 students as possible on the map, we hosted our National Geographic Giant Map Open House and invited every other elementary school in our district to attend Edison School. Several district employees volunteered for the entire day, including our librarian, Mary Greska, and district social studies coordinator, Ilkay Karen Molitari, and many other district employees volunteered for parts of the day, including Edison teachers, Don Williams, Janet Gross, Marshall Phillips, Laura Ryan, and Senora Hilborn. In addition to the map, we were able to have many other events. We highlight the Japanese Culture Room, staffed by District 205 Japanese parents and students from New York Japanese Culture Club. Activities included everything from music to tea ceremonies, writing kids' names in Japanese, and even eneemon lessons. I'm going to give this to Karen Stazowski, our PTA president, to finish our presentation.
Thanks. He was a trooper. I knew I couldn't do it in three minutes. Hi, I'm Karen Stazowski, 47, South York. Mary Greska, our librarian, turned our library into a map museum with activities that included a search game using many different kinds of maps, from Walt Disney World to the lunar surface. Other major highlights included free Tai Chi classes, a room filled with a collection of National Geographic magazines going back to 1914, an Atlas adventure game developed by our principal, Jim Pluskoda, a Sense of Asia interactive exhibit with spices to touch and smell from all the major regions of Asia sponsored by the REACH PTA, and an Asian currency room, which taught the kids about the different Asian currencies and how to convert between them, incorporating math skills into the event. We had approximately 92 volunteers throughout the day and a minimum of 600 visitors representing every school in our district. This event was incredibly well-received. I would like to thank Mr. Prunow and the school board members who came to support us. I feel that the ground we broke and the collaboration and partnerships that we formed during this event are the lasting gift to our district. There was collaboration between all the elementary PTAs, including Madison, in promoting and staffing the events, coordinated in part through the PTA Council and its president, Jill Ricker. We had a great support from every elementary school principal. We also were able to partner with the REACH PTA, who developed and staffed an amazing interactive exhibit. We were able to move beyond the elementaries to partner with Jennifer Johnson and the York National Honor Society, and Tim Albert and the York Japanese Culture Club. We were also able to collaborate with members of our District 205 administration, individual district families, and Elmhurst organizations like the Taoist Tai Chi Society. I'm really here to thank the District 205 employees who went above and beyond, who spent countless hours of their own time on this project, to thank our administration for its incredible support, specifically Mr. Prunow, Charles Johns, Malia Smith, Kathy Schroeder, and especially Karen Molitari. And last but not least, I would like to thank our core planning team: Edison librarian, Mary Greska, Edison PTA members Beth Hostler, Teresa Espinosa, Jenny Reams, and Karen Crum, representing the REACH PTA, and Edison Principal Jim Pluskoda. For me, it was a dream come true, and my hope is that we might use the new collaborative infrastructure that we built to move our district even further along in its quest for excellence. We received dozens of complimentary comments and emails, but the most satisfying was being asked over and over by the kids, "When is the next map coming?" So, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you both. Our second speaker was signed up to be Karen Stazowski. We've just heard from her. I had the pleasure of going to your school that day. It was truly an interdisciplinary and inter-district event. It was quite a day. They really worked hard, and it just is, I think, a really great example of what a unit district can do for our students. And we really appreciate everything that the two of you put into it and all of the staff who volunteered. It was, these children who were able to go, and myself included, are going to know what's in Asia and what's all involved with it and where those places are unlike none others. So, again, I really appreciate all the effort. And when is the next map coming? Do they have more?
We applied.
We applied, she said. We applied for other maps. So, this is great, and keep up the good work. We appreciate it. That concludes our public comments for the evening. The next item on our agenda is the workshop discussion. Oddly enough, we have no scheduled workshop topics for this evening, so we're going to move right on to our board committee reports. We have a lot of heavy work going on in our committees under our new structure, and I guess it's a sign of what's going on in those committees that we have less and less it's coming to the full board for discussion. If we could first hear from the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, Shannon.
I just wanted to say one thing. We're doing a lot of work in the committees, and it's been a lot of discussion, so if we don't have a vote coming to the board or something that we need to talk about right away, just because the discussion is over a period of several months. So, it's a good place for building ideas and a lot of good discussion. So, anyway, we met on February 1, and the first item we talked about was the freshman cohort program at York. And it was a really good discussion. It was the first time that the board has seen cohort data, so we spent quite a bit of time reviewing that data. Some of the highlights are identifying students for the cohort program in ninth grade at York. That starts in eighth grade. And there are about six different items that will identify students in eighth grade that show that they need some additional support in literacy, so the cohort program in ninth grade can help them get up to speed. And some of the data coming out from the first cohort, which is Cohort 2014, right now they're sophomores, showed growth in decoding, fluency, and map reading scores from the fall to the spring of ninth grade. There's a second cohort, our second year of cohort, that's Cohort 2015, so they just started high school in the fall a few months ago. And there is an early indicator that there is some growth with that cohort, but time will tell more about this cohort. I think it's too early to say. But one of the things we talked about is what do we look at to say if the cohort was successful or not? I mean, if they're getting the boost in reading that they need. So, we might want to look at grades or other indicators beyond map reading score. So, that's another discussion point that we need to have in the future or at the cabinet level. The next part that we talked about was the Explore Tests. This is one of the tests that is used to identify cohort students. It's a test on an eighth grade, and that test was, the cohort students scored between 1 and 19 on that test. Between 1 and 19, the first category, Explore Students, that scored 1 to 12 showed the most growth in the cohort program. So, kids that scored a little bit lower on the Explore Test showed the most growth throughout the cohort program. So, then the question asks, okay, students in eighth grade that scored between 13 and 19 and identified for cohort that we did not see as much growth with this category of students. So, another question to answer is the identification process of students for the cohort program. It works very well for some students, and we need to look at how it can work well for other students also. Last thing about Cohort 2 is students with IEPs that are part of the cohort program, it worked very well for those students with IEPs. So, we viewed a lot of data, and another, really the bottom line, though, for cohort from our committee's perspective is, how can we improve articulation between middle school and high school so that we eventually don't have the cohort program? How can we identify kids or gaps in reading much earlier than the eighth grade? So, I think that would be the final, the goal for this program, is to eventually put it out of business, maybe? So, a lot more discussion needs to go on. Again, that was the first time we had seen some data, and there are no recommendations coming out of that meeting for this piece. Does anyone have any other, anything they want to say about cohort? Did I sum it up? Go ahead.
I think part of the conversation that we had at the committee level as well was, what is our expected growth? What do we expect these kids to learn in the amount of time that we have? And we need to compare the growth that we're seeing in cohort to what the rest, the balance of the ninth grade class is experiencing in growth. So, there's some other ways to look at comparing against yourself versus comparing against the norm. So, I think there's additional ways for us to look at the information. I think we were going to work with Charles Johns to come up with some other increased and additional ways to measure, and as well to measure the cost of the cohort program in terms of what running the program does to the rest of the high school in terms of class sizes and the overall cost of delivering the program.
The next item we talked about was the Technology Plan update from David Smith. He presented a three-year draft of the District 205 Technology Plan, and we should start working together with the Finance Committee, the Curriculum Committee, to determine how we're going to reach some of the goals that the Technology Plan details. The demands are increasing. The curricular use with computers, it's a heavy demand on curricular use. We're increasing the online, not online, but computer-based assessments. We want to start looking at streaming video, and just the technology demands are increasing, and the technology support staffing levels have been flat for the last four years. And then there's also state mandates that have, increased state mandates have become more cumbersome, needing to add more data to those systems. So, that department is being stressed right now, right Dave? Being stressed now. And we need to do some infrastructure enhancements. So, if you haven't had a chance to read the Technology Plan, we need to do a lot of collaboration between the committees of how we're going to reach the targets with funding and curriculum targets. So, it's going to take a lot of effort among the committees and bring the recommendations to the full board. Any questions about technology? Okay. Two more items. I'll be quick. The Academic District Performance Indicators. We continue to look at this draft list of district performance indicators. And again, it's still a draft. We won't finalize the list until June. So, it's an ongoing conversation. One of the feedback points is, at the elementary level, we have a long list of academic district performance indicators. There's really only one indicator at the first grade through fifth grade level, so we might want to look at that. There's also district performance indicators that track our Ds and Fs, and we want to take another look at that to just really determine, are these the right district performance indicators? And there is also a long list, so we want to review what other comparable districts are doing for their indicators and just keep that conversation going. Anything about the indicators? The last thing on the agenda was our ELL program. We need to think about compliance considerations for our ELL program. Karen Molitari is looking at this program very carefully, and the board really needs to come up with a philosophy and vision for this program, and that's something we should put on the next agenda, the next few months on our agenda. Those are the main points, so if anyone doesn't have any questions, we can move on.
Our next committee to report is the Board Improvement and Policy Committee. Mrs. Stufel.
Thank you. So, I'm going to provide an update, and actually, we're going to probably discuss and get your concurrence on several items. This is our January 25 Board Improvement and Policy Committee. Once again, I just want to remind everyone that this committee actually has three-fold purpose. It's board improvement, it's policy, and it's community relations. It's a lot, so what we try to do is flip-flop policy and board improvement, and a lot of the community relations is actually going to start being integrated in some of the ideas that we're looking to entertain in board improvement. So, just so that you get a sense of bigger picture how we're approaching this. So, our last meeting in January 25, we first talked about board improvement. First off, what we did was we recapped, and the January 10 Board of Education meeting, where we got the survey results of how the committee structure was working, because this was the first year that we're entertaining the committee structure, and we want to make sure that it is as effective as it can be, and it's working as smoothly as it can be. So, you, the board, asked us and committee to identify next steps. So, what we wanted to do, the readout from this committee to all the board members and everyone else, is that we would like to revisit vision and mission and have that really grow organically, really, through the DPIs, because it all does work together. So, our next steps are going to be, we're looking at the DPIs, as all the committees will, but we will be looking at it from a board improvement and overall district perspective, from the avenue of, does it give us more validation and perspective on the vision and mission? The other piece that we would like to do, as the next steps of moving the vision and mission forward, is you'll hear later in our board improvement ideas about getting the board out to the public more in community relations through maybe board coffees, is that we would like to take the vision and mission out to make sure that we get to all of our stakeholder groups, so that it does truly represent our entire community. I know that we got 20 responses when we asked for feedback for the vision and mission, which was great, but we want to make sure that it truly does represent every area of our community. So, that's the first item, the next steps for the vision and mission for us. Secondly, we talked about the governance priorities, and really, the ones that are related to board improvement. The governance priorities, just so that everybody is clear, were board governments, our priorities that we talked about in our three June strategy meetings. So, what that says is, there were priorities that we, as a board, said were important for us, for us, in what we do in governing. And so, we said it really does tie into a board self-evaluation, which is part of running school boards, is every year, at least every year, you self-assess. So, what we're doing is, we're working on the survey, is the first step, that will be our board self-assessment. So, Shannon and I, that's why you have been getting the emails and the public announcements of more board improvement committee meetings, because we are opening it up to the public so that the public can see how we are taking our governance priorities that we identified when we first got together as a new board, and how are we going to self-evaluate ourselves based on those priorities? So, it's just like we're doing for the district, we're doing it for ourselves, so that you know that's what's really happening with how we are going to evaluate us as a board and how we're tying in our priorities that we talked about in our strategy meetings. Does that make sense? Yeah, go ahead.
So, the IASB, Illinois Association of School Boards, can provide a form for self-evaluation, so we're just adding more relevant questions that pertain to our district, a little more specified rather than a general form from the IASB.
And it holds us accountable to saying, this is what we said was important to the community and the values, and we are trying to govern them by that and assessing ourselves based on it. Okay, so the next steps is, Shannon and I are working on putting together the, I'm going to call it a draft, straw man survey. It will then be sent to all board members for approval, okay? But just so that you know kind of the steps moving forward. Shannon and I are meeting tomorrow to finalize it, because we have another board improvement policy meeting, February 23, and we want to share it with the committee, that full committee, okay? So, that's the steps in the process. The end game will be, we have talked about a June retreat, and this will be one element of that June retreat for the board, board and cabinet, okay? Next is, as we formed this committee, we had lots of ideas that came through the community, through the board, of board improvement ideas. So, what we did at the last meeting was, went through that list and tried to assign a timeframe, and when should we, since we have a lot on all the agendas and three-fold purpose of this committee, it was tough to try to get through all these issues. So, what we tried to do is set a timeframe of which ones are most critical that we address now, and then which ones, does it make sense to move into another timeframe? And so that we can kind of sequence and know kind of what the rolling list of board improvement ideas, and so that we can get through them in a timely manner. So, in the, some of those ideas, we briefly talked about follow-up to our board meetings and the public comment. One thing that I wanted to talk to the board about and get your consensus on is one item. And what we wanted to do is have more formal feedback and thank the public for spending their evening with us and sharing their ideas. And so, we talked about how can we follow up? And Susan happened to be at that meeting, Ms. Daroni, happened to be at our board improvement committee meeting, and she said that at one point, we had done that. So, what we, as a committee, would like to do, if the full board agrees, is we would like to reinvent or restart a letter that goes out to the public for those who come and share their comments with us. So, if everyone agrees, which it sounds like, if you don't, say so, then one of our next meetings, we will put together that letter, and we'll share it with the full board, so we all agree with that. The proposal is that it would come out from the secretary, the board secretary, for the written communications. So, that was one thing that's on the table, just so that you know a little bit more of the details. We did, however, say that sometimes there are issues that come up with a public comment that it requires additional information. Superintendent Prunow, then, we would like him to take that, and if he needs to add more or take an issue, that he would do that. So, just that, you know, that was another piece of the conversation that we wanted to make sure was clear. Okay? So, some of the ideas for board improvement is, we're going to be looking at the committee structure at an upcoming meeting and going through all the feedback and saying, what do we have to implement? What do we have to approve from the full board that will bring it forward to you all for approval? So, that's one item. Another is board coffees, or whatever we want to call it, but for right now, we're calling it board coffees, so that we can further continue to get out to the community and make sure that we are maintaining that two-way conversation. And that was really the purpose there. So, that's going to be an upcoming meeting. Board meeting procedures, school liaison, I know that that was something that we implemented as a new board. What we want to do is have a sanity check. How is that going? Do we need to change anything? How's it going from administration and a board perspective? Legislation. I know that there's a lot going on in legislation with respect to education, and so we, as a board, would like to talk about how do we, what's our role? And let's talk about what we can contribute, and how do we do that as a one voice? New program process, we talked about board best practices, just as we're talking about in education, there's best practices, there's best practices at the board table, and we want to look at it for ourselves. New member orientation and mentoring are some other ideas that are on the table, as well as looking at our own board budget and reporting and management as a whole. So, that was board improvement. If I have missed any improvement ideas from the full board, let me know, and then we will continue to put those in the rotating list of improvement ideas, and we'll discuss them as a committee and read them out to you. So, with that, then, I'll move on to policy. And really, what this particular meeting covered was a lot of policy that was a little bit backlog, if you will, but we were able to get through eight policies. I'm not going to go through each one of them unless somebody has a question, but there'll be quite a few policies that are coming to the board at the next business meeting, because we were able to flush through a lot of those board policies. One perspective that I want to make sure that we all are aware of is a little bit about the process of how this happens between the board policy and the district procedures. When we get policies that come to us as a board to look at or revisit or update, they also go to administration and the district, Dave and his staff, from a procedural standpoint. So, the policies, really, when they are reviewed in our committee, take a two-pronged approach, if you will, and then come back to us. So, they go out to the board for our policy perspective. It also goes out to the district from a procedural, are our procedures in alignment with the policies? I thought that was really important for everyone to understand as well. And with that, I'm done.
Any questions for the...
Any questions for the board improvement or policy committee, Ms. Hirsch?
I did have one question on a policy that I'll just give you some feedback to take a look at. It was school admissions, policy seven colon fifty, school admissions and student transfers to and from non-district schools. And I believe if I understand, the recommendation is that we strike a sentence that's currently in the policy that refers to early admission. And I'll just give you a little bit of background. That was a thoroughly discussed component of the admissions policy that, and it was a carefully crafted word, sentence, that if somebody really did have a child who was really, they chose to enroll that student early, that it was something that we would offer. And in this district, we had offered that in the past. If somebody wants to enroll their student in first grade, even though they're kindergarten age, that is an exception that we've made in the past. We changed the wording so that it would be that you would need an assessment to ensure that the student would be prepared to handle that ability of work, and that it was funded by the parents so that we weren't in the position of defining and paying for assessment. So that's something that we had done in the past. I don't know if you have any history on that, but in the history of the district, we had had that early entrance exclusion in policy. And we had spent some amount of time fleshing that out. I don't know, Mr. Collins, if you recall that part of the policy.
Oh, I do.
We had many, many, many lengthy discussions on many, many, many different policies, but that was something that I caught. I don't know that I'm saying that I disagree with it, but it's something that a lot of thought and discussion had gone into. So I just caught it today. So if I can have a day to look at it and pull my old notes and put some thoughts together and just give you some more background, I know it's not, I think it'll probably be coming to first reading at the next business meeting. So.
Question two on that one. I wasn't ready for first reading on that. I had a concern about it also, and I thought that was going to be held back, but somehow got, it's moved forward here on the minutes.
What we had said is that pending clarification from Mr. Charles Johns about that sentence, then it would go to first reading.
Okay, I must have misunderstood, because I'd like to discuss that a little bit more also. You can in committee?
Can we do that, Dave?
Yeah, why don't we do that? We'll just take it off the agenda for the next meeting. That won't be a first reading, and we'll give the committee more time and the board members to look at that policy.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
Okay. So, yeah, as long as that's proper, absolutely. So we'll talk about it at the committee. Are there any other policies with a historical background to?
I'm not sure that I, I don't have any recommendations, but I honestly didn't have time to get through them all for first reading. So I think we need to see if we can come up with some kind of indicator or some kind of summary of what the significant changes were. If they were wording changes that IASB comes through press, that's something that I'm not worried about. But if we're, and I know it's difficult for the new administration to really understand what's a significant change in policy, but I think some way to kind of flag some of the changes that we're making, a short description of the nature of the change, or maybe I just need more time, to spend more time reviewing the policies that are getting changed and bringing them back to first reading.
Well, and this makes sense. I mean, this was, like I said, a little bit of a backlog from previous year that we had to go through a lot of policy. A lot of them were just footnotes and very minor changes. That's why so many policies were able to get in and out of this particular committee. Typically, we can't get this many through. There's much, too much discussion on them. To your point, Ms. Hirsch, is, you know, there's a lot of background that we're checking, and there's, you know, historical information that we want to make sure that we don't overlook since we're new board members. Dave, did you have something else to add?
Yeah. The other thing is, you know, board members shouldn't feel that because it's on consent agenda, first reading, that it can't be pulled. So, you know, that's part of the process is to say, you know, are these good for first reading? And if board members aren't comfortable, if one board member says, you know, I'm not comfortable with this, I want to pull it, then we can discuss it that evening and then come back and have a first reading at a future. I mean, that's what I'm used to doing with these policies. So I don't want board members to feel because it's on first reading, it's a done deal, that's where we're going to go. That's not the intention. Intention is literally what it says. Your first reading, what's your first indication? If there are problems or concerns, let's pull it off, have further discussion, then we can rise it and bring it back.
So just from a procedural standpoint, though, I do have a question. Now that we have committees, because I knew if you didn't have committee, then you'd pull it from the first reading. But with the committees and the meeting minutes that we provide to the rest of the board that's not in the committee, I guess, how would that work?
Still, the committees are not making a recommendation. The committees are just saying, we're moving it on to the board for first reading. The board members not on the committee can say, well, I'm not comfortable with that, and I would like to put in further discussion. So, you know, the committees are not decision-making. The committees are just saying, we've reviewed it, we think it's worth moving on. But, you know, part of this is when it comes to the full board, full board members have input into that whole process.
I'm really glad that everybody's reading this. Everybody is invited to come to the committee and to give whatever, and that's not to the exclusion of, you know, fixing something later. It's just that we've had some really good discussions at policy, and if we can consolidate that, I think, and everybody hear the same thing at the same time, I think it makes it much more efficient. But by all means, bring it back to committee to, you know, be reheard and discussed if there's something there that's not right.
Any other comments? Any other questions for the board improvement policy committee? Hearing none, we will go on to the performance management committee, Ms. Hirsch.
The performance management committee met last Thursday evening, and we haven't posted our minutes yet. We had just hot off the press right as I walked into the building. So I'm reading them as I'm reading them to you. I have my own notes from the meeting. But we talked about a number of things. The committee's made up of Mr. Bloom, Mrs. Stufen, and myself, and Mr. Prunow is the administrator responsible, working with us. There were a couple of major things. One, district performance indicators. And this one, committees, we have homework for you. We've talked about district performance indicators, and we've talked about how we're going to measure, how we're going to assess where we are. We're going to measure, we're going to set some long-term goals, and they're going to be across all the areas of the business. And Mr. Prunow offered up for our consideration categories to try to put this, to put a framework in place. And so there are 10 identified categories that all of these performance indicators will fall under. There is an administrative individual who is responsible for developing this district performance indicators. I know curriculum and instruction has already been looking at them. I know that I think board improvement has started looking at them. Performance management, we've been talking about them. We haven't been looking at ours, which we need to start looking at ours. And then in finance. So I'm just going to list off the 10 categories based on assignment. So curriculum and instruction is going to be responsible for reviewing, okay, and assessing the district performance indicators for obviously academics and curriculum, a portion of the technology district performance indicators, and a portion of student services. So those are the three areas that curriculum and instruction committee, if we can put it on our next agenda meeting in March, the administrators, I feel pretty comfortable, should be able to bring to all of our committees their first stab, if not the second stab of the performance indicators, so we can take a look at those and feel confident as we bring those forward. In performance management, we have to look at human resources, student and staff safety, and student services, a portion of that group. Board improvement, there are two areas, community relations, as well as board governance. And then in finance, you guys win. We have four: facility and operations, business operations, food service, and a portion of the technology. Okay, so those are the areas that our administrators are going to be bringing us, what they would like to see measured. We can talk about them, better understand what we're trying to accomplish by measuring these things. And then at our March committee meetings, our goal is to get through these, okay? And then we'll bring them all back to performance management, and we're going to flesh them all out and make sure we don't have any gaps, and make sure we feel confident they all fit into the framework so that we are ready to finalize them in May and into June, set the baselines. So those are the work. And I will send a follow-up email with all of those, the categories, and who needs to take a look at what. The next, sorry, any questions on district performance indicators? I think we've, we talk about them in every meeting, we know what they are. The next item, stakeholder satisfaction survey. A portion of the indicators that we want to measure are things that we need to go out to our staff, out to our students, out to our parents, and solicit feedback on how we're doing. Mr. Prunow is familiar with a particular polling tool. It's the Harris survey. There is a cost associated with it, but it is actually, this one particular tool that we've taken a look at is interesting in that it assigns impact analysis, and it predicts how you can potentially improve satisfaction in particular areas. It is a survey that would be conducted so that we, our goal would be 100% staff participation. We would have 100% student participation. I believe it's from sixth grade through 12th grade. And then we would invite parents to participate as well. And these, again, would be something that we would look to establish a baseline, to see where we are. Harris provides national norms so that we can see where we are nationally, but we can also see what is going to be the most impactful changes, so that we make investments to improve customer satisfaction across the board. That's something that we're going to see. I think there's at least one other tool that we were going to take a look at. We talked generally as well. We talk about parents, students, and staff, but there is not right now a component. We need to get some pricing and better understand what the opportunities would be for reaching out to our taxpayers, the community at large. The survey, as we see it now, is pretty focused on people that we talk to every day. So we're going to be taking one more look at that at our next committee meeting, and I would expect that a recommendation will be coming back to the full board at a regular board meeting, where we would make sure that you fully understand what our goals are, what the opportunity is, what the cost would be, and what the implementation plan would be. As a committee, we talked about our goal of attempting to have this survey done this spring, this school year, so that we have good baseline data which can feed into our district performance indicators, so that we can set some goals for the next school year and beyond. There is a little bit of information that I did find that I just mentioned to Mr. Prunow. ISB is also looking to place some student and parent satisfaction goals and tie them to school report cards. None of that work has been done, to our knowledge to date, but it's something that we're going to have to continue to take a look at in terms of what the new school report cards are going to, are going to measure and look, and we're not sure, none of that work has been done yet. But that's something that we'll have to balance as well. So that is the survey piece. Any questions, any comments, any feedback? No? Okay. The next item, we talked about district position qualifications. There are some complexities in a unit district in terms of defining teacher job descriptions. We're looking at, there are also some ramifications of SB seven legislation and some deadlines. And if we do want to make any changes in job descriptions, they would need to be adopted by May 10th in order to take effect for the 12, 13 school year, kind of rank the, I can't remember the word, the sequence of honorable dismissal list, okay, and how we fill positions. But we have a very short timeframe with many, many projects going on right now in human resources. So I'm not sure how feasible it is for us to develop, but we've got a couple of broad lists that the administration's going to take a look at that might be, might be considered this year, but we're going to continue to discuss this one. We still have more work to do on this. The education reform update, Brad's department is working very, very hard. We've got many, many changes that we need to implement as a district to implement fully and take advantage of SB seven. The timeline for certified staff was identified. We've gotten all of our certification letters out to all of our staff. We're expecting to get responses back and verify that we know all of our staff certifications and qualifications for teaching. And then that'll be corrected, and then we will come up with a final list, which would be our sequence of honorable dismissal list, which has to be reported back to the union in a timely manner. We also discussed principal evaluations. Principals will be evaluated, a new administrative rubric this year, with supporting data provided by a teacher survey instrument that's been developed on the 21 characteristics of effective principles. That, we will get that document to the board. We didn't get it posted, but it's a great document that defines the characteristics of what we're looking for in our instructional leaders in the buildings. So we'll share that with you, and that's going to be built into the performance evaluations. Finally, we took a look at the superintendent evaluation. Dave offered up an example of his 360 survey. It'll be done, I think, a little bit differently than we've done it in the past. A 360 survey is something that goes out to the people that Dave worked with on a daily basis, his district leadership team, the board, and some community members. And it's fully anonymous. It's, I don't know if it's Survey Monkey, but it's a tool that allows all the feedback to come back to Dave on how he interacts with individuals and how effective he is in moving the district forward on the various goals. That approach is going to be used not only for the superintendent, but also Dave plans to use that for evaluating his cabinet members as well, and having them conduct it. And then with the principals components as well, I think we're really moving towards having consistency across the board in terms of an evaluation technique that we're using for all of our district leaders. And that is performance management. So we will be getting you a list of the categories of district performance indicators, and which committee is being asked to take a look at those, and then we'll ask for those back in April. That's it.
Any questions for the performance management committee? The minutes will be posted shortly?
Yeah.
Okay. I know we have a couple of other topics to talk about under board communications unrelated to committee work. Are there any other questions for the three committees that reported this Seeing none, we'll move on to upcoming meetings. Most of them are committee meetings. We have on Thursday, the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. The following Thursday, the Board Improvement Policy Committee will meet again. March 7th meets the Curriculum Instruction Committee and the 15th Performance Management Committee meeting. In between, we have our regular business meeting of the full board on February 28th. We have one item, one action item coming out of closed session. Ms. Hirsch?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution entitled, "Resolution Authorizing Notice of Honorable Dismissal of Certain Educational Support Personnel."
Is there a second?
Sure.
Moved by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Mr. Collins, to move the honorable dismissal of, I don't have it in front of me, educational support personnel. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries. That brings us to board communications, other than our committee reports. Is there any board member who has something to bring to the board this evening? Ms. Hirsch?
Just really quickly, I was able to attend and participate a little bit in the professional development that went on for our last late start Wednesday morning. I was invited to sit in at Sandberg Middle School. We had every middle school teacher in the district in one building, and they were organized by subject matter. To begin with, all the English teachers were in one room, all the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade English teachers. They broke out into sixth grade English teachers for the whole district. They were working on power standards, they were working on proficiency skills, all the things that we've been hearing about and talking about. And there were some really, some great work going on. It was really impressive. I was really happy to see all of our middle school staff in one building, sharing experiences. It was interesting. We want, we're seventh grade team, we want to get in touch with the eighth grade team, make sure we're in line. So they're focused and talking about alignment. It was great. In one social, in the social studies room, they were talking about DBQs and introducing DBQs at the middle school level before they even get to the high school. So there was some really good work going on there. So I know it's a lot to coordinate, having all the teachers in one building. I think, I know there, a lot of Charles staff was there to support and facilitate. So it was, it was not a ton of time, but it seemed as though it was very effective use of time.
Anything else? Mr. McDonough?
Not sure if this falls under the category of board communications, which seems to have an intergovernmental nature, but I did attend school-wide planning, Title I planning, rather. an intergovernmental nature, but I did attend school-wide planning, Title I planning, rather, at Fisher School. And Fisher is a unique building in our district. It's our only Title I school. I intended to stop by to get a feel of the process, wound up staying for two hours, and I apologize to them, but it was compelling. Collection of passionate professionals, courageous parents telling personal stories, and this was just the early formation part of it. The insight, the degree of professionalism, a collaborative culture. It was very impressive at that school. Meeting unique challenges at that school. And I am the liaison. That's why I did that. The other thing I wanted to update the board on is last night, I attended the City Council Committee on, I believe it's Development, Planning, and Zoning, but it could be in any order of those three. I'm not sure what the name is. They have a couple different bodies that move those words around. They considered the TIF qualification reports for the three TIFs under consideration, and they agreed to move forward on all three TIF proposals. And they are likely to proceed to ask the City Council to approve moving to Phase 2 of the process, which involves quantifying and finalizing the rationale for doing TIF, including alternative financing options. The committee then discussed in detail the North York, the largest of the three proposed. By the way, the three proposals are North York, York Valette, and Riverside Drive only. The first two are in District 205. But they did discuss some of the changes to preliminary thoughts about the North York TIF, and they went more in detail for that one. One of the things that was covered in the newspaper, in the patch today, and I'm not sure whether it'd be covered elsewhere, was the inclusion of the Han Street property and its removal from TIF 1. They discussed porting, but came to no conclusion. And so the thing that I raised this for is to ask the board how it would like to consider the city's movement on TIF. We had asked both here in the full board and in the visit to the committee in December that we'd be included in the planning process as a collaborative member of the community and have some of the school board's interests be reflected in this Phase 2, which is a more qualitative analysis of project goals. And I guess there are two options. One is to keep this at the full board level or to have the Finance Committee discuss it because there seems to be a need to examine some of the numbers and magnitude of things that are being proposed in the process that the city's going through for its TIF district initiatives. So I just put that out there if members could provide some direction. To the extent there is some number crunching and review of data, perhaps that might be more appropriate in the Finance Committee where that level of detail might be more appropriate.
I have a question. Do you, the last time the city came and talked to us, I was under the impression that they said that they didn't feel that their consulting firm didn't feel that the Valette TIF was feasible for a number of reasons. I don't recall all what they were. Do you know what's changed now that, I mean, did you get a sense in any of the meetings? I know you go to more than just the one last night, as to why now they're considering the Valette TIF as well?
The reports that were submitted were called qualification reports, and they discuss the applicability of the TIF process to the challenges within, or the perceived challenges within these areas that they've identified. I'll admit, I got the reports at 5:30 last night, so it didn't give me a lot of time to read them before the meeting last night, and I didn't get a chance to read them today. But the general conclusion is that TIF is applicable. That area is qualified for a TIF. I'll, you know, obviously if this, you know, before we consider that, I'll be going more into depth and see if there was, you know, there were some changes. And there were some changes to, in the qualification reports compared to the general, what was it called, feasibility report that was issued last summer.
So what sense do you get of the city's timeline? I mean, I think we, as a board, have said we want to be an active cooperative unit since us and our constituency is so affected by TIFs. What is their timeline? Do we have time to send it back to committee? Do we need to bring it up at our business meeting? Do we need to talk about it in March if we have, if we're going to take any kind of action?
I didn't get a detailed idea of what the timeframe would be. They still need to, these were draft qualification reports. They still need to finish that, and they did not approve them or recommend them for approval last night. So there is at least one more meeting on that. And then what follows is a qualif, I'm sorry, the Phase 2 process. And I did not get a specific idea of how long that would take, but my understanding based on the conversation was it could be a month or so to complete or undertake that proceeding. But again, there was nothing specific identified at the meeting.
Ms. Hirsch.
I'm not real familiar with what the city has to go through in order to authorize TIFs, but if I understand this correctly, it's going to come out of committee to the full council as Phase 2, and that is when the full, so it's basically the recommendation we expect to come forward out of committee is that they're going to be moving forward on the three TIF areas. Is that your sense?
Their statements last night were that they were not, that these were, that they take a more inclusive approach on this with a view that it's easier to remove properties from the TIF than to include them. However, the words that were used about, I'm trying to remember the words that were used regarding the TIF areas, that there is some, this is substantially what they understand TIF areas to be, but it is not a guarantee that they would move forward with all three or what number it would be. However, there's a certain level of detail that they are proceeding with that would indicate that there's a certain inclination to go with these TIF districts.
It's my understanding, and again, it's very limited, that once they go to Phase 2, then they start having public hearings, and they have locked down what the TIF areas are going to be. So, and again, not a TIF expert in any way, shape, or form, but from what I'm hearing based on about the results of last night's meetings, they're finaling down on the TIF areas. The other question I had for you, which I think it would be helpful if we could be, you know, wouldn't expect the committee to tell us before they make a decision, obviously, but, you know, to be helpful to stay in tune with what the cycle is and whether that's through the intergovernmental, it's you and Mr. Collins meeting with them or establishing a relationship outside. The finances, I have no problem with them sitting in the Finance Committee and looking at it from a financial standpoint, but I think this is larger than just the financial impact. I think it's intergovernmental. I think it's a relationship between the governing bodies and how we work together. Not, you know, crunching the numbers clearly and understanding what the implications are for the district is a very important piece of that, but I also think there's another aspect to the relationship. I did have one particular question I want to make sure I understand. They're looking at carving out Han Street and removing it, but yet they would touch, right? If they stick with the plan that I had seen, we, our concern at our board table was that we were concerned about porting, about moving monies that potentially could be declared a surplus from TIF 1 into this newly identified TIF, which comes all the way down to North Avenue. So now not only is there an opportunity for porting, but now they're also taking this Han property, carving it out and extending it. It's got nine years left, and they're looking to include that in the new TIF area, which is going to give it another 23 years. Is that?
That's correct. You know, to be included in the new TIF, it would have to be carved out of the old TIF, I guess, released property. The belief was that there's more to do since they've gone back. I don't know if they've gone back to the beginning on the Han Street, but they've gone back to an earlier stage of development, I believe, based on the problems they've had with the developer of the Han Street property. They felt that more time was needed to identify revenues, to retire debt that would be needed for Han Street initiatives. And that was the reason why they were thinking of moving it to the brand-new TIF from the TIF that could not be extended.
I hate to be pummeling you with all these questions, but that's what you get for showing up at a city council meeting. What's to prevent them from carving out other little pieces of TIF 1 and saying, "Oh, we're not done with this either. Let's put it on the new TIF." I mean, well, how, strikes me.
I think any, any issue regarding TIF 1, we need to look at from the context of we have an intergovernmental agreement with the city related to the payment of surplus and the obligation, although there are numerous conditions attached to it. We need to see whether adjustments of TIF 1 fall within those obligations. And I wish I were more knowledgeable. Again, a lot of this stuff came to me at 5:30, including the phases of, or 5:30 yesterday, including the phases of TIF development. I'm familiar with the legal requirements, which is you pass two or possibly three ordinances to make it happen, but that sort of preparatory work I'm not, or preparatory work I'm not as up to speed on, and I'm going to have to spend more time before I can report about that.
Ms. Hirsch.
Mrs. Derone, I have my own personal opinions about the effectiveness of TIFs and the value of TIFs and developing, you know, the community and the tax base, but I think we're at a juncture that, well, I think we're asking you the questions, Mr. McDonough, because you, either on the kindness of your heart, or you really had nothing better to do and you decided to go to yet another meeting, but I, and I know you have an interest in TIFs, but I think it might be appropriate at this point in time for the board to consider some kind of formal, ongoing relationship communication and designate or in some format, whether it be the board president or someone that it's identified as the key communicator in working with at the committee level and then thus at, you know, following that, the full city council level, to make sure that we're understanding their intentions. I mean, honestly, my information came from an article that was posted online. I would prefer that we're communicating directly with the organization that is moving these things forward. I think we want to be good partners with the city. I think if we come up with some kind of agreement on a formal communication process for working with the city on this, and, you know, we've expressed our interest in being collaborative and working with them, and I think we need to maybe put a formal communication plan in place to ensure that we feel as though we're informed and accurately are informed and prepared.
City members, city manager, Tom Trazin, I believe, I don't know what his title is, finance guru at the city, came to the Finance Committee meeting not too long ago to talk to us about this. And there were some next steps, I thought, that came out of that meeting. We were waiting for the city to go back and look at their records of the intergovernmental agreement of 2004. Do we have this on the, are they coming back to us? Is there anything going on with that? I mean, we have, we started this vehicle of communication with the city through the Finance Committee, and I'm just wondering if we have it on a finance agenda, if it's coming up. Maybe we should pursue it that way. I'm open to any other suggestions. What's the pleasure of the board as to how to proceed? I just don't want to, all of a sudden, be reading in the paper that there are three new TIFs, and we went, "Oh, where were we?" I'd just like to at least have a voice at the table. Mr. Purnow, how would you suggest we proceed? I think we need some legal counsel as well to know things like, you know, maybe it's a matter of which lawyer you employ as to whether or not you can carve things out of one TIF and attach them onto new ones. And maybe it isn't. Maybe it's in the law. I don't know. But how would you suggest we proceed with this? Understanding that we want to be good citizens of Elmhurst as well as good stewards of the school district's funds.
Well, I think you already have, you've established that the Finance, Board Finance Committee is going to oversee the TIF process along with Chris Welton. I think the Finance Committee can come back and make suggestions to the Board of Education on next steps, once they analyze some of this information, but I think they're going to have to have some time to know the pros and cons. And then at that point, they can make recommendations to get in touch with lawyers, to have maybe one or two board members then assigned to go to regular meetings with the City Council, to have that voice at the City Council level, those kinds of things. So I think probably your Finance Committee could probably take the lead and bring it back to the full board and say, "Okay, here's where we are. This is what our recommendations would be to the board to move forward." I think it's, they've already been into this pretty deep. They have some knowledge base. Chris Welton has knowledge base. They've had presentations from the city, and I just think they have the basis for moving this forward for the rest of the board. So that's what, that's what I would suggest.
Finance Committee?
Yeah. The Finance Committee would be happy to be the point people on the issue.
If you meet tomorrow, that won't give you enough time to digest it, and then you don't meet until the later part of March. Is that too late?
I think we're planning on adding a few meetings. We have a robust agenda of things we need to cover, and our Thursday night meeting is a very, very ambitious agenda. So I suspect that we won't get to all of it, so I think we'll have to schedule some additional
Mrs. Stufen. And the additional meetings, I mean, TIF is going to have to be on the Finance and Operations Committee meetings ongoing because there's a short timeframe is what my understanding is as well. So I think that, to answer John's original question, I think, and, you know, from my perspective as a board member, I think that it is important for us as a full board to hear the updates. I do still agree with the Finance and Operations looking at the details because really, you know, the questions are, is depending on how the TIFs are structured really determines whether the TIFs are supportive of education in Elmhurst and our students. And that's really, you know, what the Finance and Operations Committee was looking at, you know, all of it, but really we're looking at, you know, what do we need, right, to make sure that we are the good stewards of Elmhurst and the school district? So I guess, you know, that's my way in, is that I think that we, as a full board, need to hear updates, and because of the timeframe, I think that this is a short window. I mean, it's going to have to be an agenda item at every meeting, at least some sort of timeframe allocated.
So we'll drop this in your lap and look forward to hearing what you decide as to how to proceed at least, and contacting the city back. You're frowning, Mr. Welton. Do you have something to say? Anything else? Any other board communications? Ms. Stufen?
I have several items. One, I wanted to thank our PTA Council for representing education issues at the Legal Women Voters Candidate Forum. I thought that that was wonderful, and I think that we should acknowledge that. Hopefully, it's okay that I'm doing that. On behalf of the board, I think it's very important for all of us, and I'm glad that they took that initiative, so I thank them for that. Secondly, I wanted, I forgot at the last board meeting, to update the board on
Secondly, I wanted, I forgot at the last board meeting, to update the board on the data first, which is an IASB presentations that we, as a board, were, extended an invitation to attend for free. Three Oak Park River Forest districts were getting together to better understand these new, they're new workshops designed to help board, board members, administrate, district administrations answer key questions like, how do we know what we're, how do we know that we're making progress toward our student learning and district goals? How can we communicate that progress simply and effectively to our public? How can we use data to ensure continuous improvement on our district? And how, how can and should data inform our decision-making? Last question that it helps us answer is, how can data help us make better decisions in difficult choices in these times, limited resources? And it was, it was very valuable. I know that I discussed, it was, I told the Board Improvement and Policy Committee members that I had attended, because it came up in our discussions about, you know, doing assessments, right, of the board, and meeting with other boards to get best practices, which was very valuable to, you know, connect with other districts and other board members. But, so I offered the package to the fellow, my fellow committee members, but I also wanted to extend the invitation or offer if the rest of the board members would like the packaged materials on the data first, modules two and three. I know that we received the first module through Ms. Hirsch when we first came on to the board early this year, which was valuable, and then this takes, you know, two different phases. And I know that you didn't attend, but I still think that the information was very valuable, that you'll glean some, the IASB perspective, you know, kind of scenarios from school districts, which are very similar, you know, to us. And the module three looks at the high school, which was really interesting, and we had very good discussion from the OPRF High School, which is in our conference. So if you would like that, those materials, we can make sure that that gets out to board members, cabinet, whoever wants it. Okay? I also wanted to update, I sent everyone the Lend. Chris Welton, as Assistant Superintendent of Finance, represents us, as well as I represent us, at the Lend, which is the Legislative Education Network at DuPage, which is really the legislative arm for us. Peg Agnos is the executive director there that really pushes, she's in Springfield a lot, representing educational issues. I know that she wants school districts to become even more engaged in legislative advocacy, so I wanted to put that out there. I know that she's asking for Chris and I, you know, to be more involved, and so I want to, you know, make that, make everyone know that that is being asked of us. And then to make sure that you are okay with the information that I sent to you, I want to make sure that you are just as informed as I am, as Chris is, representing us. So what I'm trying to do is, when I get emails from the Lend that I think are important for all of us, to either know what's going on, know how we can help advocate for education, and then lastly, when they need information from us. So I just want to kind of do a sanity check, you know, to let you know that, you know, this information is being sent to you, if it's, needs to be altered, if it needs, you know, any feedback is open. But I'd rather you have the key information. So, for example, this last piece was significant bills that, you know, are on the docket, which I think is important for us to know. And then, you know, so I guess I would say, in summary, if you do have perspective, you know, Chris and I would be those, the representatives from District 205, sending it to Lend, which then gets all of the DuPage school boards together and talks to the legislators and represents us. So I wanted to talk about that, too. Thank you.
Ms. Hirsch.
Along those lines, we've all heard about Speaker Madigan's visit to Elmhurst College, and I was able to be present for that, and I sat there when he dropped his, his little idea of having local school districts pick up the cost of teacher pensions. And I have to admit, I sat there and my chin kind of dropped, and I looked at people I was with, I said, "Did I hear that right?" I think we would, given that we have heard comments from all three leaders in the state of Illinois, I'm going to guess that there is some serious consideration of the state of Illinois passing along at least some portion of the teacher pension system to local districts. It's a moving target. I don't know that we're going to have any insight in terms of what it's actually going to look like, but I know that as I'm meeting candidates that are running for a local office that are state candidates, statewide candidates, I've been talking to them and giving them the school district perspective. We need to pay close attention to this. This is something that is going to dramatically change the fiscal outlook for local school districts all over the state of Illinois, not just Elmhurst. We're not any more special or different than anybody, but there are several proposals that have been bandied about, whether or not we would be on the hook for the money that the state chose not to pay in previous years, whether we would be on the hook from a certain point in time moving forward, whether there is going to be a ramp-up to school districts taking on the responsibility, or whether this is going to be as of a certain date. You are now responsible for the teachers in your district. I have some personal opinions on some of the challenges that school districts face in terms of the state is, has been funding teachers' pensions or not funding teachers' pensions, and having access to those resources when they need to borrow funds. They also, at the state level, set every rule for the teachers' retirement system in terms of what teachers, what their years of service are, what types of benefits they're going to receive. And I'm sure, Mr. Hellman, that it is not a thin book in terms of what the rules are regarding teachers' pensions and what the responsibilities are. This is something that is going to, has the potential to dramatically alter our financial situation that we cannot afford to not pay very close attention to. So whether it is through reaching out to our legislators, whether it is reaching out to candidates, whether it is asking, I think it's pretty clear that everybody's watching on Capital Fact blogs and on, trying to track what's going on in the legislature and what's going to come out. But given the track record of Illinois, I don't think it's going to be a long collaborative process with a lot of discussion from interested parties. I think it's going to be something that's going to be sprung on us. So I'm just, again, I think we're all aware of it, but I think it needs to be stated publicly that we're very concerned about it.
Mr. Bloom.
Just to give you a sense of the magnitude, because I was looking this up, too. The state of Illinois, the taxpayer of the state of Illinois, contributed by the state of Illinois, they contributed $11.8 million into the fund, which represented 23.38% of teacher salaries on behalf of the teachers in our district for 2000, the fiscal year ended June 30, 2010. So you get some sense of, it's 11 to 12 million dollars were the contributions they made, that some portion of that they're looking to shift to us. Some of that is current need, some of that is making up for funding shortfalls, but the, the fund is 48% funded, I think, so they still have a significant way to go on that as well. So, I mean, the magnitude is very significant, just to give everybody a sense of how big those dollars are.
Mr. Collins.
Yeah, I was about to point out those exact same facts. While the teachers contribute 9.5% of their salaries, for the last two years, the Illinois income taxpayer has contributed 23% of our teachers' salaries toward their pension fund, and leaving it tens of billions of dollars underfunded. And this clearly is an effort by the state government to dump that from the, to take that from the Illinois income taxpayer and dump it into the lap of the Illinois property taxpayer, and then make every school district deal with that. It would have catastrophic implications for every school district in Illinois.
Ms. Stufan, you had a comment?
Yes. Actually, that was one big driver for me to send to the last Lend update, because, because it's a huge issue, Peg Agnos, who's the executive director of Lend, is actually setting, setting aside Thursday, March 22nd, for a Lend meeting and is inviting everyone to attend. And there, she's going to have a speaker as well as panel, because she, she really believes that we need to have a healthy discussion about it from every single perspective, and there's a lot.
March 22nd? Yes. Mr. McDonough.
Did this idea of shifting support of the pension system to the property taxpayer from the income taxpayer include any discussion of the need to adjust tax caps in connection with shifting a liability?
No, it was interesting, it was presented in a very interesting way. He was onstage taking a Q and A, and he was, had, Lee Daniels, the former Speaker of the House of Illinois, was the emcee, because he is affiliated with Elmhurst College, and so he turned to previous Speaker Daniels, I guess, still refer to him as Speaker Daniels, say, "Do you know how this happened, that we decided that we would pay for all the teachers' pensions? I don't remember. I've been in the legislature for a really long time. We don't know how this happened." There was no ownership of it, and in going back, once I heard it, I also found previous references from John Collerton and from Governor Quinn that predated the Speaker's mention of this. So it's something that has been discussed at high levels within Illinois state government, and I think it's probably most likely going to happen at some point. I think, Mrs. Derone, one of the things that, at least since I've been on the board, we have not taken a very proactive role in reaching out to our state legislators, I think, one time since I've been on the board, did we compose a letter, draft a letter, and send it to our representatives. And I think this might be an appropriate situation and time for us as a formal governing body to, to draft some commentary and offer it up to our state representatives. If, that's up to the will of the board, it's an idea.
Incidentally, we did speak about engaging our legislative representatives and senators. I guess that's redundant, sorry. But engaging our representatives and senators, we discussed this at the last Board Improvement and Policy Committee meeting, and talked about the need to do so as a group, and to discuss some of the things, and also to discuss things in a relevant timeframe. But this is all complicated by the fact that some of our legislators are involved in political campaigns, and the desire of the committee seemed to be to avoid entanglement in those things, but to also recognize that there's a certain way that legislators listen when they are involved in a campaign that may be advantageous to, to the district.
On that happy note, is there any other board communications? Anybody want to go home?
If I could just indulge, just superintendent, I just want to end on good news. I just received a letter from the executive director of the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program, informing me that, for the first time in recent memory, a senior at York High School has been selected as a candidate for the United States Presidential Scholarship Program. Just so you know, students are invited to apply to be one of 500 semifinalists nationally. From that group, 141 are ultimately chosen among outstanding graduate seniors to become U.S. Presidential Scholars. Scholars are chosen on their accomplishments in many areas, academic, artistic, leadership, involvement in school and community, and they must demonstrate really an excellence in education that represent the promise of greatness among America's youth. Each year, some 3,000 candidates are identified across the nation for the academic component of the program, based on having scored exceptionally well in ACT and SAT. And I'm pleased to announce that the nominee representative in District 205 in this year's Presidential Scholarship is national merit semifinalist Ryan McDonough. Really great news and an outstanding accomplishment.
It is, and a much better note on which to adjourn. Is there a second?
One second.
Moved by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Ms. Stufan. To adjourn, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
Happy Valentine's Day, and not too late to get flowers.
Right. Thank you.